No, I was calling Seth's name.
DL, are you ready? Okay, very good.
I'm ready, yes.
Okay. Very good. Good evening, everyone. I will now call this special meeting of the Fayette County Board of Education to order. Ms. Jackson, good evening to you. Will you please take role?
Good evening. Amanda Ferguson.
Present.
Amy Green.
Present.
Tyler Murphy.
Present.
Penny Christian.
Present.
Monica Mundie.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I'd like to welcome everyone joining us online for tonight's meeting of the Fayette County Board of Education. Our community has played an important role over the past several months as we've worked through the budget process. We appreciate the active and ongoing involvement and advocacy. Tonight's meeting was called in an effort to continue that engagement, to provide an opportunity for everyone to receive the same information at the same time directly from FCPS rather than through the lens of external outlets. And before we begin, I want to emphasize, as was shared in the meeting announcement, that no action will be taken on the budget this evening, rather this is an opportunity for the board to have an organic discussion and to hear from the staff in preparation developing proposed tentative budget documents. So with that, I will hand the agenda over to Superintendent Leggins.
Thank you, Chair Murphy. I would like to also add my very own welcome to everyone joining us tonight. Thank you all. My goal this evening is to do three things. It's to share a realistic picture of the district's current financial position. I'd also like to outline a path forward that does not include any changes to the occupational license tax rate and to receive clear direction from the board about the items that would require board approval. Our shared objective this evening, though, is to minimize impact to the school level investments and certainly want to continue to provide ample educational opportunities and increased outcomes for our students. As anticipated, our financial staff was able to access a more complete information about the closeout of the 24-25 school year earlier this week and was able to determine the fund balance after the close of business on Monday. I shared that information with board members as soon as it was available. Based on these updated figures, my leadership team revisited past projections. We reconsidered previous allocations and identified additional ways to reduce expenditures at the district level. Every consideration was evaluated with the lens of maintaining the investments that the board had identified as your priorities. That included dual credit, Avid, Grow Your Own, a 1% salary increase for teachers and staff. But additionally, we also look to ensure that they align with the recommendations of the Budget Solutions Work Group. These analyses actually began as early as Tuesday morning, immediately after the numbers came in on Monday evening and has continued to as recently as this morning. But I want to be clear that every single expenditure is being evaluated with high scrutiny. Since our last board meeting, I asked the cabinet and department heads at the district level to take an even closer look at their budgets and identify any additional ways that we might want to make ends meet. And they truly have produced, and you'll see some of that work reflected tonight. I also want to make it very clear to everyone that this work will continue and we will continue to look for other ways for additional opportunities to save in the coming weeks and months. And I will certainly keep the board and community apprised with any additions that come about. So with no further ado, let's jump in. I do have a brief slide deck with three slides. Could we start with slide one, Seth, please? Okay. The tentative budget approved by the board in May included a beginning fund balance of $42 million, a revenue increase of $16 million from raising the occupational license tax to address the projected $16 million budget shortfall and a contingency fund of $42.9 million. Adjusting the occupational license tax recommendation has certainly raised questions, but I feel there is a path forward to a balanced budget without it. So although the numbers have not yet been audited, we feel confident that we will have a carryforward balance of $26.3 million. The Budget Solutions Work Group recommended taking the contingency fund down to 4%, which would be $28 million. We propose allocating the entire carryforward balance to the $26.3 million towards the contingency. And so if we can go to slide two, that leaves us with the $16 million projected shortfall. And so to balance a budget, we will recommend the following. Freezing all hiring except for classroom positions and bus drivers, anticipating a $2 million savings there. Redistricting overnight, I'm sorry, restricting overnight professional learning at the district level. Restricting food for district-sponsored activities and meetings. Furniture replacement at the district level will not be done. The practice of sponsoring tables at community-sponsored events will go away. And the purchase of items for district-wide appreciation would go away. And that would equal with all of those initiatives, that's $1 million. Also eliminating the executive coach for the superintendent, which is $25,000. Implementing additional cuts to the district-level department budgets is about a $2 million savings. Discontinuing the practice of using NTI days. As you may know, when we use our non-traditional instructional day, it counts as a virtual school day and our cafeterias are closed. But as a result, we still have to pay the salary costs for our child nutrition staff without offsetting any revenues or federal meal reimbursements. And this has contributed to the need for our general fund to cover the cost of the child nutrition fund. So that is how those savings will potentially come about. Also, another initiative is converting overage of staffing allocations to permanent substitute positions. This is about $1.2 million, and let me explain. As you know, schools are staffed on enrollment projections. The Kentucky Department of Education has outlined a process where these projections are adjusted based on actual enrollment after the school year begins. And so you may have heard other people in other districts refer to this as day 10 or day four count. In most school districts, this results in staff being moved from to different schools. But in FCPS, our past practice has actually been to keep, to leave up to one position in place when a school is actually overstaffed. So but this year, we're going to wait two and a half weeks longer and to provide every opportunity for students' enrollment to grow to its maximum level. But at the end of that time, as in years past, schools have had the option of purchasing those positions with school funds. And any other remaining staff, however, positions will be reassigned and will keep their current rate of pay, but they will help reduce substitute costs to ensure that our schools are accurately staffed. These changes are actually part of a broader effort to apply stricter financial discipline across all operations. So each recommendation has been double-checked, not only for accuracy, but for sustainability with the intent of preventing future shortfalls. We project that these changes, we will not, with those changes, those do not require board approval, but they will equate to about $6 million in cost reductions overall. If we can go to slide three, please. There are additional items that would require board approval, however. I'm seeking direction from the board as we developed the proposed working budget to bring to you at the planning meeting on September 8th. One of the recommendations from the Budget Solutions Work Group was to sell real estate. With the opening of the Hill, which obviously is a hub for innovative learning and leadership this year, the former Southside Technical Center building is empty. In 2024, it was estimated at a value of about $8.9 million. And based on the prime location and increase in property values, we anticipate that figure may be a bit higher. Another possibility identified was to raise mill prices. If the board wanted to consider that option, an increase of 25 cents per mill would equate to about $426,300 in revenue. And if there was an increase of 50 cents per mill, that would be about $852,000. Our goal with this recommendation is to restore Child Nutrition Services budget to a positive balance, eliminating the need for additional support from the general fund to cover shortfalls that have occurred in recent years. I do want to underscore, though, that 48 of our schools and special programs provide free lunch to all students under what we call the CEP, which is a Community Eligible Provision. And also those who qualify for free reduced lunch at the remaining 20 sites and schools we have, that they will not be impacted either because they continue to receive a free, would continue to receive free meals. A final consideration for the board would be the potential absorbing of some litigation cost by internal legal staff. And that is something that could also be up for discussion. But depending on the board's direction on these initiatives, we will prepare a balanced budget for further discussion and consideration at the September planning meeting. If the board does not reach consensus on this direction or the recommendations presented, I will ask that you provide additional guidance on some new options in revenue or expenditure reductions to help us achieve a balanced budget to present to you in September on the 8th. I want to close by reassuring everyone that we're not only balancing this budget, but we are really, truly building a stronger, more transparent process to guarantee that future budgets are accurate, responsible, and fully aligned with the board and community expectations. So at this time, I would really just like to hear your thoughts and the possibility of these possibilities and any others you may have.
Chair Murphy.
Thank you, Superintendent Leggins. Board member Green.
Thank you. I have several questions on the real estate one. You talked about Southside being a potential option to sell. And I think there's a lot of data points around that that I would be interested in learning. One, I know that there was discussion about making that an operation location to move a lot of the facilities that are behind Lafayette, that are in facilities that are in much need of maintenance themselves. And so if that building, if Southside was no longer an option to move, like maintenance and grounds and child nutrition, what would the cost of maintaining the buildings that they're in be first? And then what would be the implications on the availability to move forward with the Lafayette project? Because I know the shuffle of the buildings and those positions or those departments was all considered with the development of the Lafayette project. So I'd like to hear all of that before that I would consider that specific one.
Okay, well, I don't have the exact figures for you for the cost associated with those. What we do anticipate, however, is in future years, not this fiscal year, not '25, '26, but in future years, consolidating additional campuses. And those campuses would possibly be available for some of the, moving those staff members to those locations. If that was the direction the board ultimately decided to go this year with Southside.
Thank you. And then another question on that same one, that would not be a reoccurring or a sustainable source of revenue. And so even though it sounds like a nice number right now, it would leave a hole in the future. And so I feel like everything that we come before us, if it is short-term, I really want to measure the difference between a short-term gain versus that long-term cost. And so I think that that's really important because if every year we're looking to unload a piece of real estate for a certain amount of money, but then we're going to turn around and eventually need that at a cost that's going to be much higher than what we would sell it for. So I really, there needs to be a really strong, long-term plan for this kind of decision.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We'll certainly present that data for you if that's the direction we end up going with the working budget presentation.
Thank you, Board Member Green. Related, on a related note, Board Member Green discussing like the usefulness of Southside for facilities. Have we, one thing that I think would be an important consideration, especially in terms of sustainability and long-range planning, is if we, have we looked across departments? I know you indicated that everyone in the cabinet has reviewed this budget. But have we done a needs assessment across each department and campus to ensure that the needs are being met? So, you know, by share agreement and maintenance, right? Have we engaged the folks in maintenance, in curriculum instruction and so forth to make sure that we've not missed anything or there wouldn't be an adverse impact that isn't currently being anticipated at a bird's eye view? But as it trickles down, it might impact the work of our staff at a department and campus level.
What I can state to that is we have asked our department leads at the cabinet level to have those conversations based off of many of the recommendations we've presented to you this evening. We, I can tell you, there will be some impacts there. There's no way to cut that amount without having some impact. We're simply just trying to make it minimal as possible. But there will certainly be some, some impact. And we can, we can possibly get a list of what those will actually be.
Thank you. That would be helpful. And I think, again, as long as we just engage, as long as we engage with the team on the ground who can then communicate some things that might be missed at that, that level of review. I think that will be helpful. And on the, I will say that one of the things that gives me pause on the list you just reviewed is the idea of increasing lunch prices. And especially in the federal context where, you know, currently we do have campuses who qualify for CEP status that allow students, every student there, to eat without charge. With potential federal changes, the number of CEP schools could significantly dwindle and adversely impact our students and families. Is that, one conversation we had in the last meeting was reaching out to community partners. Some community partners have indicated a willingness to engage with the district. Is that an area to shore up that child nutrition account where we could engage with community partners so we're not passing those costs on in the form of increased prices?
I, you would like to make that a call this evening on this actual meeting. I welcome, that would be ideal if that, our I, I welcome, uh, that would be ideal if that um, our community would. Um, who are our business partners, et cetera, would be willing to uh, help with those costs. That would certainly. Help us quite a bit. And ultimately help our families.
And, and that would be my, uh, Board Member Green.
Oh, I was just gonna say, within the discussion to that point, I think providing an avenue if somebody wants to reach out and how do we engage that, right? So provide that line of to, for community to say, I, or community member business says, I want to step up and support our students this way. Um, can we advertise and share how they could do such, reach out to you?
Absolutely. I'm looking at Michael Adams' email right now to make sure he's. Michael Adams is the, it's michael dot Adams two at fayette dot K Y schools dot U S. And we can certainly make that available on our website as well for how um, considering our financial situation. How, if anything, community can support. And that, that is a direct um, response to something that the, the work group also did recommend. So thank you for that.
And I would like to say that, I mean, I agree, I definitely don't want to have to um. Make up for our own mistakes by putting it on the backs of our students and our families. And I think that's the last place we should look. But I would also like to go back just to the initial slide. The twenty six point three million is the, is the getting balance, getting fund balance carry forward, however you want to title it. And that will be the contingency fund. What percentage of the general fund is that twenty six point three million?
I have not calculated that, um, so I don't have that. That is something we will have for you at the. The bud, the tentative budget.
Well, I think that's a very important number now because it sure seems like going from forty two million to now twenty six million. That we have gone below the contingency fund or.
Well, it, it is certainly.
Required amount by board policy. We've, have we gone below the, the six percent required by board policy?
Yeah, that, that, that is not six percent, you're absolutely correct.
It's less than.
I don't know the exact number.
So we have violated our own policy by going below the six percent already, is that correct?
Well, it's not at the six percent. The um, policy or the administrative procedure actually states that it will go to stay at six percent or go to the board for uh, approval.
So when is that going to be asked for approval? Or, or when was it asked for approval? I mean, it's already there, we already don't have that money in contingency. I realize it's based on an upcoming budget, but we're under this budget now.
Yes, and apparent, and as stated previously, this was not discovered until year end close. And so that's why it has not been brought to the board at this point.
So we don't know who moved money from the contingency, who spent it and on what, it just got spent.
But there is an ongoing investigation to look into that, yes.
I mean, I'm already uncomfortable enough with reducing the contingency. Maybe it's my past, past service and having it drilled in how we need to save for a rainy day. And it's very concerning to me that we're already at this twenty six point three million. I know it's much better, it's much rosier outlook than fifteen to twenty two, but it's already very concerning. And I think that we've got to look at, at more than just the items you put on the board. And yes, selling property is not ideal, but neither is charging our families for lunch. I mean, have we looked at, I think it's been brought up before, have we looked at a re- reduction in force at the John Price Building, at the administration building? At, have we looked at all the employees that we hired, all the new staff, forty or fifty staff? At the administration building that we hired under ESER and then transferred over to the general fund?
We've looked at.
Why are those, why are those positions protected? I'm hearing from schools all over that hold arms positions are not, are not being um, taken care of. And you're asking schools to give positions back and give some of their money back that was promised in the spring.
Well.
Now is that not cutting staff at schools?
Have been, have there been, has the issue of positions been addressed after, like, with the district level?
There has been several physicians cut. Again, it was um, nearly over six million dollars. Um, or nine million total at this office prior to the additional six that I just spoke about.
Positions were cut?
Positions were cut, yes.
I'd like to see that list of positions.
Okay.
And, and the salaries that were cut.
Okay, we can make sure you.
I mean, and I'm still concerned from over a year ago that we hired people under ESER funds, spent money that was one time. Supposed to be for one-time expense, but we put it as recurring expenses in the budget. And I know there are positions, even though I was told there weren't any positions at J D P. That were hired under ESER and then got converted to the general fund. Because when we used to have a position control document, you could look at that and see that.
Well, as you will recall, there, there was an instance of that occurring after the H R study came out. And it was going to take two years to implement that because there was ESER funds. Uh, the board was told and approved a budget that allowed for it to be implemented in year one. And then those, so part of those were implemented through ESER. And then the following year fell off of ESER to become part of general. But that was done through the process of, of the study that the board approved and um, directed to move forward.
Well, there's still a lot of people that would like to see, and I asked for it, and previous board member Jones asked for it, that position control document. And no one really knows that all the positions in the John Price Building and, and what they are costing the district. And if we're talking about transparency, we really want people to see that. I mean, all I hear is we've got to protect the schools and I agree. But, but no one in the schools is seeing any reduction in force, no furlough days for administrators, none of that is being considered. And we are at a crisis point. I don't know who Thors used that word, but to me, we are at a crisis point. And I think we have to look at those drastic measures.
Thank you.
One question I have is, have we considered reviewing uh, large contracts? And potentially uh, renegotiating and looking for opportunities for long-term savings in that regard?
Yes, that is part of the additional six million that I presented to you this evening.
And do you have an estimate as what, that, may that come in a little bit higher or is that?
Uh, if it does, it won't be significantly higher. Um, the six million is um, all budgets together combined, um, pretty. Very uh, concrete numbers, simply because these are contracts that have already been entered into. So there's not a um, a lot of little room if the contracts. Voided, then we know the exact amount that's actually it was, or what it would be.
Chair Murphy.
Uh, Board Member.
A few questions. One, I'm not aware of the Southside plan or the plan for Lafayette. I think it was like briefly mentioned at one of our past meetings, but since I've been a board member, I don't think those have been shared with us. So if I can learn what those, when um, Board Member Green's questions are answered, if we can learn what those intentions were. For both of those plans, um, that would be good. Also, um. I am, and I think I've mentioned it before, in support of selling real estate for this year. If that is what we have to do to avoid um, really having to reach and impact our classrooms quite a bit. I also have heard from quite a few people at the school level who are having some concerns um, about what they've been asked to do ahead of. Day ten and the inability to be able to provide the services for our students at the campus level that they've been able to do before. So I highly encourage looking at for this year, any other methods that we can do. Need it be some of the ones that we've had to do in the past, which is inner production in days, need that be furlough days. Um, to hold the, especially since schools already started, schools have been planning for, you know. This budget since earlier last year, um. Like look other places that we can do, um, or what we can do to hold those um, positions in the classroom. As, as much as possible. Um, a few other things that I had was also contract review um, as well. But even for next year, looking at the contracts that we necessarily don't have to renew or that we can do without. Or maybe we can redo, renew at a smaller amount. So that when we're looking at next year's budget, maybe some of the measures that we have to do now can be offset with some things that we can do. Moving forward, um, and I hope that will be done, just not for contracts that come to the board. But also for contracts that we don't see or that are not under our purview as well. If we could get a um, just a quick look at, and not now, but for our next meeting on the eighth. Just to make sure that we fully understand how each of the ten recommendations for the work group were looked at and answered. There's a few of them that I'm kind of understand how they've been addressed or why they may or may not have been addressed. But um, just to make sure that I'm fully clear on that piece um, as well. Cause it seems like some may not have worked, some may not have been considered, or some are kind of wrapped in some of the larger numbers that we've heard tonight. So just to make sure that the work group, the work group and community understands that we've taken each of those, each of their suggestions in consideration. And what that has looked like with the recommendations that we have gotten, how that plan um, is shaping up as well. Another piece is um, with school lunch prices for, so the items that are up for board consideration. Do we need to do all of those things to balance the budget? Or is there wiggle room within the, the three, I think, that we were given?
Those are all things that um, we were recommending this evening to help balance, but the sixteen million dollar shortfall.
Okay, so all three of them need to happen to balance.
Or something else in their places, yes.
Okay, I would love to see some other suggestions instead of raising those school meal prices if we can. Or raising it at the minimum amount while looking at anything else that we can do as well. But if we're prioritizing, I would rather prioritize making sure that each of our schools have these positions that they've already kind of been planning for. And to make sure that we can hold those as much as possible um, as well. That, and my other question was the thirty million in, I believe it's called discretionary positions within the schools. Is that amount still holding or has that had to be reduced as well?
No, that is still, that's according to board policy and our staffing formula.
Okay. All right. I think that is all I have for right now. Thank you.
One question I have is we um, think about some of these adjustments. How tight is this budget to absorb? Additional volatility to, you know, we not, we don't know what's going to happen at a federal level, uh, any of the unexpected. Um, it, I, um, it would just fall back on that, on the anticipated twenty six point three million dollar contingency. So have, has staff uh, kind of game planned some potential scenarios of things that might be on the horizon? And uh, thought about how the district might absorb those in a way to minimize impacts on students? Uh, do we feel comfortable about our ability to handle any of those types of uh, contingencies?
At this point, the budget is extremely tight with the contingency being where it is. And the sixteen uh, million dollar projected shortfall with expenditures versus revenues thereafter. Uh, it leaves very little li- wiggle room, if you will. One of the things that we continue, as I stated earlier, we're going to continue to look at a variety of different ways. We can possibly um, make up for uh, some of the shortfalls. Um, even with the uh, reduction in force, even if it all did occur at this level. And we can certainly um, give a lesson on how that works at a future meeting. Um, I can't state that that's not going to impact uh, students or the services to campuses. Because uh, the, the work that happens outside of campuses is in support of campuses. And, and so I just want to, um, so there's, th- this year there leaves there. In the future, there are plans that could really get us to a long-term um, financial stable position. Uh, this year is not the year where there's wiggle room for that to occur.
I mean, I think that's a great question, Mr. Murphy. I mean, the, you know, part of the reason that we're in this situation is because our projections. Apparently because our projections were so far off last year or maybe the last two years. I mean, how can we give the public any assurance that they're not going to be horrifically off again? I mean, the budget is way too tight, too short, whatever you want to consider it. And I mean, how do we have any confidence that, that the projections are going to be right? Apparently, I mean, we have someone new doing the budget who's never done it before, if I'm, if I understand restructuring correctly.
Well, what I can tell you without getting into current and investigation, what I can say is that we're confident in these numbers. They've been looked at by several different people and several different angles. And um, from several different um, departments. And so um, with varying levels of experience and expertise. And so I'm um, I, I'm very confident in the numbers that I'm presenting to you this evening. And I've been highly involved in this process as well.
I mean, were you confident in them last year? Or it, are you saying that this, this year, this process has been different as of the last month?
Um, considering, and I don't want to speak too much on an investigation, but I am much more involved. Uh, than I've ever been before this year in ensuring that these numbers are accurate.
Thank you.
Do we have a plan to communicate these? Once the working budget is, is drafted and will be presented on September eighth. Um, to the point about needing to be clear, concise. And making sure that we're uh, helping uh, explain the budget. Ex- ex- explain the revenue coming in, the expenditures going out. And connecting the dots for families on how those are translating to the work happening in the district. Alongside the work on the working budget, are, are you and your team also working on a, a communication plan? On a uh, path forward to uh, engage families, engage schools? You know, communicate beyond just uh, in the setting of a, of a board meeting. Um, to make sure that we're continuing to keep folks engaged, accurate information's getting out there. And it's being communicated in a way that is clear and digestible.
At this point, that is certainly um, one of the things that's in the works to have regular and ongoing, very simplified uh, communication. With family, staff and um, our community as a whole to talk about where we are and um, and how it looks. I do know the board receives a financial report each month. But in addition to that, not only will that be uh, more simplified for uh, layman um, consumption. It will also be uh, something in between that can also be shared um, on a regular basis. For uh, our community to take advantage of and to have access to.
Thank you.
Chair Murphy.
Uh, Board Member.
Um, just a few more thoughts, um. Was there um, any consideration? And I apologize if you mentioned this earlier when you were giving us the options about like reductions in district-wide events? Or looking to maybe scale those budgets back? Or I just know when we were talking um, at the budget retreat back in February, there were some events that had a pretty good price tag with them.
Yes, that was actually um, part of the overall, the six million dollars.
Okay.
Um, we, we were scaling back on district-wide appreciation, um, sponsoring tables at community events and things of that sort.
Oh, right. And then um, if I'm seeing everything correctly. And we go with carrying forward and placing in contingency, all that's. And we go with carrying forward and placing in contingency all that's left. We're gonna go in under this, well, under the six percent. Um, will we be given a plan or a long-term plan to get us back up to six percent over the next few years? Or thoughts on how that might take place?
Yes, that will actually be the work of the budget and the budgets uh, and the board. That that will be the work of the board and the board's budget committee um, this coming year to ensure that. Um, there's a very clear plan to go there and um, but that is certainly the goal. And it will um, be something that will be presented to the board as early as November.
Okay, and my other ask is to, once everything is kind of done and closeouts finished. Truly understanding where that funding went to from the contingency. I know we have those items that was previously shared with us of where, you know, thoughts of where it was going. But I would love to see a list of what what needed to happen or where it was spent in the amounts. Um, that took place there as well. And then um, my last point, at least for now, um, is the, about the position control document. Because I had asked about um, trying to get a document as well. And I've been a public servant about pretty much all of my career. And my salary has always been public, needed been when I've been, you know, working for the state or different universities. You can always see my name, my title, you know, the department or where I work and what my salary is. And I think that goes a long way with really showing the public that that we're being open. And that they can see where their money's being spent. And I can understand how for employees, how that might feel invasive. I I completely understand that. Um, but it seems that every major university in the state does this. Um, JCPS does this, and I do think that's something we need to start working towards or figuring out how, you know, we can make that happen. Just to continue to be transparent and for the community to know. Where the vast majority of the budget that is approved, right, well, over eighty percent of that, you know, is spent on salaries and where it's going. So, you know, I hope that's a long-term consideration that we can, you know, support as a board or have conversations about that um, in the future.
And I'm I'm totally open to that. Could you, at a separate time, tell me what's, what you would like to see in addition to what's already provided every month?
Mm-hmm, I can provide that.
Thank you.
I have two additional questions, at least, at least two additional questions, I can't, I can't promise just two. Uh, I know we had a conversation about the um, delayed uh, tax receipts. And because they were delayed, they can't count towards the carry-forward, uh, they have to count as revenue for fiscal year twenty-six. So my understanding is that those uh, anticipated revenues have already been included in the calculus, is that correct?
Yes, they've been accounted for.
Okay.
We estimate that to be about two point five million of uncollected taxes at this point.
My second question, and I know this doesn't relate uh, specifically to general fund expenditures. But it does relate to long-term debt strategy, right? And obviously have concerns about how um, how some of this might affect our long-term debt outlook. And so have, we had discussions with our operations and architectural design team. About uh, evaluating uh, current architectural designs and identifying potential cost savings. In ongoing and upcoming projects.
Yes, I um, not, not in detail, but Myron and I have had a discussion about. Uh, the possibility of scaling back some of the extravagance, if you will, on on new buildings.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Chair Murphy.
Board Member Green.
Thank you, um, and so I kinda have some just overarching ones that I think as the recommendations come forward, just kind of questions I'd like to see asked. And I, and I actually, I, everybody that has uh, shared has kind of said these same things, so I just kinda wanna make sure I hit the points. Um, when the recommendations are brought to us, really highlighting if it is a short-term or a long-term and what that cost balance is. Because our role is long-term um, sustainability of of, successful sustainability of the school district. And so I don't wanna make a short-term decision that really impacts the long-term sustainability. If we're not considering additional revenue streams, then I think any change we have to make that a balanced budget needs to also be sustainable. Um, and so just really seeing that measure and making sure that that can, that is being considered. And if if there are moments when it has to be a short-term for reasons, I think just being honest about that. Uh, and having that kind of right out there. I think also in every lens and every decision, what we do is is focus on what is best in serving our students. And so ultimately, when we see a budget proposal with all of the recommendations, especially anything that changed from the tentative to now. Talking about what that impact looks uh, directly to student services. Uh, and that doesn't just mean the classroom, because if a building can't have their lights on, if that classroom is cold. Um, if the grounds can't get to certain things, so understanding, and you've said it many times. Everybody that is hired in Fayette County impacts student learning. And and so this is very difficult, we're asking everybody to make sacrifices to ensure that we're providing for our students. But also being very aware of those sacrifices and what those costs are. For example, if we're asking all of our departments to cut their budgets, um, but they still have to take care of certain things, no matter what. That's gonna be an overage, and then at at the end of the year are those spaces that we see um, unintentional spending. And then we come back and say, we spent more than we had, and that's gonna impact the carry-forward for next year. So just, I love asking for savings now, I think it's very appropriate, we're at that moment. But being realistic about what we're asking for, but it's also required. Um, we can ask for a lot of savings, but at the end of the day, lights still have to be turned on, roads still have to be plowed, things like that. I just wanna be aware of those things uh, as well when we hear those final recommendations.
Absolutely, yes ma'am.
Chair Murphy.
Uh, Board Member.
I realize that the third recommendation, uh, we never discussed, it was about in-housing the litigation. And so um, I'm not a part of the litigation team. So I think knowing if that is something, you, Amanda, I see your face, sorry. Um, I don't know their capacity, that's what I was trying to get at, their capacity to take that on. Um, and so just being assured that we're um, not asking to do beyond what they have the capacity to do. But I think that that is a a decent consideration.
I mean, I noticed that too, because I think we said somewhere along the way this year, it was said that part of increased expenses were increased open records costs. And that they are, I mean, I don't know if they're working overtime or, I know we have full two time, two full-time attorneys. But if they're already overwhelmed with open records requests, how can they take on more? I mean, you're saying where we normally have outside counsel handle it, that we would have in-house counsel handle it?
Yes, that was the recommendation and and instances where it makes sense. And one of the things that um, and that's just something the team has, it's just not. And I certainly appreciate our legal counsel and our legal team, but every department at this level has already done that. And continue to take on more uh, with less. And so it would um, it's really, that they're ready to take it on, um, so.
So I know we're waiting uh, specific recommendations for the working budget, and you've outlined some proposals here. So my understanding, just so I can clarify, so the recommend, the current recommendation from the administration. Um, is at our previous meeting, we said all our options were on the table. We now have the information of the carry-forward numbers. And you've come to us this evening and you said, there's a path forward without pursuing the option of the OLT. So is the current recommendation with with various other things pending. Is the current recommendation of the administration saying to take the OLT off the table as an option?
Yes, that is my recommendation at this point, is to allow us to balance the budget with other options. Other than the occupational license tax adjustment rate, or rate adjustment.
So our next step.
What's the reasoning for that?
Uh, because.
I'm sorry, Board Member.
I just said, what's the reasoning for that? I mean, in the spring, we had to have it, and now we're even lower on the budget and.
Well, the reason is that it has been quite a bit of discussion. There's been um, quite a bit of more information gathered. And we are looking at just making more cuts, if you will. In places where we originally, we were trying at that point to prevent any and all um, access. Or disturbance to the campus level, where we're at a point now to where we're just trying to minimize it and not prevent it completely.
I mean, I think it's, it's just, it's frustrating for me as a board member who's, I never thought it was a good idea and don't, still don't know where it came from. But I just think it's very frustrating to the community that you, that whoever brought it up, thought it was the be-all, end-all. And now all of a sudden, it's just not even on the table, when we apparently had all of these options available to us before. And we're even more in the red than we thought we were in the spring.
Well, I I wanna be clear that it's not, uh, before it was very clear that we wanted to do very little to. To impact instruction or district operations. Uh, this plan will disturb district operations and have impact on um, campuses. It's just minimized, uh, previously it was trying to avoid it altogether.
Okay, well, I just, and again, to to minimize effect at at schools, at school campuses. I strongly recommend the reduction in force or furloughs of administrative staff in the price billing.
Thank you.
So next steps then, if that's the recommendation, uh, the the board would need to get consensus on moving forward. If the, it's the will of the board to move forward, we currently have a hearing for September fifth. But if we wanna take that out of the uh, list of considerations, we can do that at this meeting and say the next step is on September eighth. Uh, we receive a presentation of the, that draft presentation, the working budget. Um, for consideration at the action meeting on September twenty-second. Uh, and if that's, if that's the direction we would go, I just wanna make sure that, again. Uh, that communi- the communications are are clear uh, and consistent to the community. Uh, on what we're, on what's being proposed, clear and consistent to the board on what's being proposed and what, what those minimal impacts will be.
Chair Murphy.
Board Member Monday.
I do, well, my personal opinion is that we still have the hearing on the fifth. And we give the community the opportunity to share what they feel about the options that have been presented with us. Or the path that we're going to take now that, you know, that path has changed um, quite a bit from where we were. Um, when the tentative budget was passed and, you know, we had the majority of our budget conversations as well. Um, and I also um, second, Board Member Ferguson, that, you know, let's keep all options on the table. Minimize that campus impact um, as much as possible. And, you know, if we have to look at some of the measures, need it be reductions in days, furloughs that have been done in the past. Then that's just, it's unfortunate, but it's what we're gonna have to do at this moment.
Thank you, Dr. Monday, you're saying, are you saying keep the OLT on the table or keep the hearing?
Keep the public hearing on the table, cause my understanding from the meeting that we had was that it was about the OLT. But people could also come and talk about other budgetary um, thoughts. I I may have gotten that wrong, um, but um, I I, you know, everybody knows I'm not, wasn't a fan of, you know, the OLT. Um, so I'm fine with taking that off the table. But I do think that we should hold the public hearing and let the public have an opportunity to share um, their thoughts on the current budget items. Um, and recommendations that we're looking at right now.
I agree with that, Dr. Monday, I mean, not that I wanna have another meeting, but, and I don't know how many people we'll get on a Friday night. But since we've put it out there and said we were gonna have it, and, and you know, it's another opportunity and maybe. Makes the public comment at the next meeting, not quite as long, I mean, spreads it out. But I I think we need to hear from the public if, if they have something, something to come and say. Cause I heard a lot about today, why there was no, why this wasn't in person and why there was no public comment, but.
Thank you, um, from my understanding from our last meeting, there were three purposes to September fifth. One, to have that potential hearing for the OLT, which is off the table, it sounds like. Um, two, to provide space to um, have, talk about the budget. And then three, to provide time to explain the property tax rate as well. And so I'm amendable to keeping the time if it's not called a board meeting, but a public forum, even just a space where people can share. Um, their thoughts before we hear the fin- like the proposed um, budget. I think that that is appropriate, if it's not at nuances, if it's not actual board meeting. But again, just a public forum or a hearing where people can come and share their thoughts, I would be agreeable to that.
Board Member Christian.
I'll go with the majority, it's fine.
Uh, Superintendent, again, what would, what would you be prepared to present on September fifth? So just some understanding what uh, Board Members, Monday, Ferguson, Green are saying. If if the goal is to solicit more feedback on the budget, would it make more sense to have something presented on the eighth? And then between the planning meeting on the eighth and the action meeting on the twenty-second. When we have a tangible draft of the working budget um, to hold an additional uh, community forum. At that time, or I'm just thinking about the time to compile the information and uh, from this meeting. And then put something together for the community to have time to review, to be communicated to the community. And then get meaningful uh, feedback that can inform the board's decision.
Yes, I I I would state, my my original thought from the, the hearing or board, or whatever it's going to be called on the fifth. Was when the administration was preparing two budgets, one with the OLT and one without the OLT. That would have allowed two budgets to fall out on a Friday evening before Monday's board meeting. Um, ninety-five percent of the budget would have been completed with tweaks based off of that meeting itself. Uh, with us only having one budget at this point without the OLT. That um, that there's no way we can wait until Friday evening to create a budget for Monday. Um, especially with um, us trying to be more transparent and putting something out there when the board meeting is actually posted on a Friday evening. Um, and so that that would create an issue there. Um, because it would basically put us in a position to where we're working on the final. Some pretty significant final touches of the budget. Um, twenty-four work hours of, um, if you will, before the actual meeting. Uh, I'm, again, this is the will of the board, should that's what you want to do, I will tell you it puts uh, us in a position. To where it it wouldn't really allow the amount of time necessary in order to do that. Um, my hope was from this meeting is that we could get direction from you all as uh, the elected board as to the direction. Um, as to how we wanted to make this happen, what your priorities uh, remain or how they have changed. And then present something on Monday, the eighth. And should that not be the option or the route you want to go? What I'm hearing is there would be several options to a balanced budget from what I'm hearing this evening. But we really have to take a look at that um, well in advance. If you wanted to ultimately um, keep it, we do our absolute best to to make it work. Um, however, the suggestion, um, Chair Murphy, that you mentioned of the possibility of having a meeting in between that meeting. Um, may be better, that gives less than a um, a a weekend for uh, my staff and I. To uh, to turn over uh, the work that's necessary to present something that is going to be meaningful enough quality.
Chair Murphy.
Board Member Green.
I'm amendable to that, I mean, I think that does make sense, if we can see a proposal um, first. And then after we have those discussions, then allow a space between that first um, proposal shared with us in the public. Then another space as a hearing for people to share anything and before the final. So I think that makes sense, and I appreciate Dr. Logan's candid, uh, candor about. So I think that makes sense and I appreciate Dr. Legan's candid uh candor about sharing about that. The hardship that might put on the turnaround of time. So thank you.
Board Member Monday.
If it's possible to get it on a better day. And time where more people can possibly be there than, you know, a Friday evening when we got football games happening and. And all kinds of things, um, that may possibly be better as well.
I mean, I don't think we're asking you to to have the budget. Redone or or changed after the public hearing. And I mean, I guess the argument is that the. The public won't have a budget to comment on, but they can comment on what we've talked about tonight. I mean, if we wait until the eighth. I don't know when the budget can be posted. Public isn't gonna have time to view it. And then they wouldn't be able to comment until the action meeting. Unless we move this and have another meeting in between, like you're saying, but I don't. Yes, it's unrealistic to expect you to to do something based on comment from Friday night, but it allows us to get that feedback. I don't, I'm I'm fine either way. I don't think we need both, one in between and Friday, but.
Yeah, I was suggesting the one in between as an alternative to Friday, just so that there would be a tangible budget that presented at the eighth. There's time to communicate it clearly, and then it makes the feedback more authentic because there's a a budget in front of the public.
So when can it be published or posted publicly? The budget realistically?
Um, it is ideally that it would be that Friday before the um.
Planning meeting.
The the planning meeting. And uh, Dr. Monday is. Is what I heard from you and what I'm hearing from Amanda are two different things. Um. I think what Amanda said I can I can work with uh. As far as I I was, uh, your, my understanding from your request was to have it so that you can get feedback to impact the budget. But um, as Ferguson is saying that it is um to just so you guys can um hear from the public before Monday when.
Yeah, and I think that suggestion works as well. It's still, you know, the public having the opportunity to give some feedback. And it does seem that being able to see the budget for all of us is more impactful. Um, and, you know, knowing and everyone will know of the comments and suggestions, what's doable, what isn't. You know, to the extent that we've seen. So I I'm totally fine. I'm just want the public to be able to have the opportunity to. To share with us in that open forum. So whatever works.
And in that case, I'm I'm fine with keeping the Friday. I'm sorry, I I just wanted to get clarity.
If you feel if you feel like you will be prepared to present something. On the fifth, since it's already been announced and posted, we can do that uh with the understanding that it will be a budget. The original intent was to prevent uh two budgets, but my understanding now is there'll be one budget that will. Seek to balance the budget, minimize impact on classrooms and students and do so without. The O L T. Is that correct?
Good. Let let me seek clarity again. My understanding is Friday evening is about the items we discussed tonight. The ones that you brought up and the ones that I've brought up and to hear from the public regarding those items. Um. And. By that time, however, the budget will already be created and posted. And it gives you all an opportunity from that Friday to that Monday before that Monday's board meeting. To hear feedback from community members um to inform the discussion on that. Monday, not to present. A budget on Friday night in addition to Monday at that board meeting. Just so we're all on the same page.
That is my understanding. Does that capture the request?
Chair Murphy, I'm fine. I'm fine with that. I just, you know, I think it's important to highlight the the board's role in the budget. So we set the priorities, the administration brings back how that's gonna happen, and then we hear the feedback from the community. I think that's kind of the order. And so uh, I thought we were going one way and now it seems like we're going back. Um. You know, we're having those discussions about the priorities. You're having the discussions on how you can meet those priorities. So maybe it would be best to have it between the two. Um, so then after it is created, the board has had the authentic discussion as a team with the administration. Then there's space for that additional um discussion of about about the budget before it's up for a vote. But I'm amenable to any to either one. I was just. It it changed. As you said, you seek clarity and so I um. So I am as well on the purpose of it now.
I am amenable to anything and that there's nothing that precludes the administration from having an additional. Uh, informational session. The more information that we can communicate, the better. Uh, between the planning session and the action meeting. So it's not an either or choice. So I'm comfortable with, since we already have the date on the calendar, we can keep that date, create another avenue. Uh, for communication and engagement, just as long as uh we communicate clearly the purpose and intent. Uh, of that meeting and the expectations for that meeting and then uh come into September eighth. Uh, with a draft of the working budget and prepared to discuss next steps.
Okay.
And Dr. Legans, I know that, you know, uh, Vice Chair Green and I had uh shared some recommendations. Uh, and some questions. So the next steps following this meeting is kind of, I would expect the same. Uh, from from all board members, anyone who has recommendations, su- questions, suggestions. Uh, from tonight or upon reflecting on the information received tonight, uh, to share them with you. Is that uh, correct?
That is correct. Absolutely. Please feel free to email me, call me. Any any way of communicating with me.
Okay, if there are uh no further questions at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. This special meeting of the Fayette County Board of Education is their motion.
So moved.
Motion, Member Board Monday, is there a second? Second, Board Member Christian. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you all.
Thank you all.